It was empty.
It had to be empty at the point you said that there was.
Yeah, it wasn't really a building of any kind.
This is the April nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, City of San Bruno Planning Commission meeting. Roll call please.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Vice Chair Salmon.
Here.
Commissioner Su Jendra Mishra.
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Commissioner Biassadi to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the February fifteenth meeting. Chairs open for motion.
Mr. Chair, can we move to approve the minutes?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, and we'll move on to communications staff.
Yes, I would just like to make the announcement that Aaron Acknen, the community development director, is not here tonight because he, his wife just had a baby boy on Friday.
Six fifty a.m.
Six pounds, ten ounces. Name is Jack Acknen. And I'll be filling in, my name's Mark Sullivan, I'll be filling in for Aaron for the, probably the next month.
Very good. And since Aaron isn't here, I'll substitute for him. He likes to announce that all our packets and backup supporting materials are on the website, sanbruno.ca.gov, and watchers at, viewers at home can look up and see what we're working on tonight. Item number three is public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And this is for anyone who has an item for the commission, and it's not on the agenda tonight. Please step to the podium. Please give your name and street name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Richard, as I will. Thank you, Commissioner Peterson and Chair Peterson. My name is Richard Hedges, and I live at nine oh four Wharf Side Road in San Mateo, and I'm coming to you tonight with an invitation. You may, or should have at least, received an email from myself and Marshall Loring regarding a tour to Contra Costa Transit Village that's going to take place this weekend. We're going to meet at the Millbrae Bart Station at nine forty-five a.m. We've acquired from MTC twenty Clipper cards. Unfortunately, due to the Hiram Johnson regime and a nineteen eighteen or nineteen law, city council people are forbidden from taking any kind of a ticket for a conveyance on rail. So, we can't extend it to the city council people, but I think we can to you. And we're going to, we chose this date for a couple of reasons. The people planning it have very busy schedules, and this was open, that's the first one. And the second one is that, that it's an excellent day to travel by bart to Contra Costa Transit Center because no one has to change trains on that day. And for people who are new to transportation, the nervous, most nervous I've seen people coming to the airport on bart is trying to figure out how to, how to change trains at, at the San Bruno Station. So, we thought this would really work well for people like yourself who are decision makers, and that's why we invited you, to see a transit-oriented development that is completed, that has the highest bicycle loading of any bart station in, in the system, that has lowered their single car trips by thirty-two percent, that has evolved over sixteen years. It's a model for taking density from very moderate and low and very moderate higher as it goes to the center near the bart station. It has a five-story apartment building right. I can hit it with my old weak arm with a baseball from the bart station or from the bart platform, and it has, all of its units are accessible. They're either, can be accommodable to folks who with disabilities because it's set up with all the requirements, and ten percent of them are accessible. I don't know whether you're aware, but in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, the grand jury in San Mateo County did a report on ready wheels outlining how stressed the system already was financially. Since then, funding has dropped. The need has gone up. We'll have an onslaught of seniors, sixty-five and over, in the next twenty years here, and we have to start building developments that allow people who are disabled or young and want to work in our community to live near transit. Because I don't know whether you've noticed the gas pumps lately, this is not going away this time. And it's going to continue to rise. People are going to be limited. These are the developments of the future. You'll get a chance to see something that, that melds in very well in a suburban-type development. You guys have done a wonderful job at the San, San Bruno Bart Station with a development on the old military base. I, I think it's wonderful. I've toured it, and I would like for you to see something that's totally built out and totally transit-oriented development. I've got a flyer, or actually a packet for you. And may I approach and give you some business cards?
Please.
I'll make myself available for questions, and then I won't take up any more of your time.
Thank you very much. Any commissioners have any questions for the, for Mr. Hedges?
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, through the chair.
I just wanted to ask the date.
It's this Saturday, the twenty-third. We're going to meet at the Millbrae Bart Station. That's probably a little less convenient for you than much of the rest of the county. I think we're going to have about twenty people. I'm hoping that we are, and more possibly. But one never knows till the, till the tour begins.
Thank you.
I've taken the tour myself, and it's an excellent tour. Jim Kennedy, who's been involved in the project from the very beginning, from Contra Costa County, is going to lead the tour. So you won't have to deal with a couple of amateurs. You're going to have someone that really knows the project. Thank you.
Thanks again. Are there any other members of the public who have an item they wish to address that's not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, Announcement of Conflict of Interest. Do any of, the commissioners have a conflict of interest on the agenda today? No? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. Agenda Item Five Eight, five ninety-nine Cedar Avenue, zoning R one, request for a planned unit permit, tentative tract map, and architectural review to allow the construction of fourteen new single-family homes per chapter twelve point thirty-two, twelve point one-one-six of the San Bruno Zoning Ordinance. Staff report please.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. The item before is request for a planned unit permit and a tentative parcel map to allow the development of fourteen new single-family homes on a currently vacant parcel. The subject site is one point nine acres in area and is located at the corner of Cedar Drive and, excuse me, Cedar Avenue and Pepper Drive. As you recall, in two thousand and eight, the Planning Commission approved a similar development at this site, and that was also for fourteen single-family homes. Those homes were larger than the development before you. They ranged in size from thirty-one hundred square feet to thirty-six hundred square feet in area, and the average lot size of that development was about twenty-eight hundred square feet. That developer was not able to complete the project. The current applicant has submitted a revised project for your consideration this evening, and that project includes the development of fourteen new single-family homes, but with a smaller overall size and a more traditional architectural style than the previous project. The road accessing the development will be a private road, as well as all the utilities located within the roadway. The development does comply with the general plan designation of the site of low-density residential at approximately eight units per acre. The proposed lots range in size from twenty-nine hundred square feet to fifty-five hundred square feet, with the average lot size of about thirty-six hundred square feet. And the homes will range in size from twenty-three hundred square feet to twenty-four hundred square feet, and that does include the two-car garage. The architect has presented two different floor plan options, each with two different facade variations. The architectural details of the proposed new homes were reviewed by the Architecture Review Committee at its December sixteenth meeting, and at that meeting, the committee requested additional architectural variation, more details, darker color scheme, and additional green building measures. The applicant has incorporated the additional facade articulation as requested, and with particular attention to the lots facing Cedar. Those means lots ten and eleven. If you saw on the plan, there's little bay projections there, so it does have a nice treatment to the exterior side elevation rather than a large blank wall. The applicant has also presented a darker color scheme. I do have the color board here, and they do have kind of darker, warm, rich colors. I'll let the applicant address the green building measures in part of his presentation. The applicant did conduct a public outreach in September of last year. That meeting was attended by approximately fifteen residents from the neighborhood, and comments were generally favorable for the project. The review and approval of the two thousand and eight project did include the preparation of a mitigated negative declaration, that's our environmental review document, and we asked the consultant that prepared that document to take a look at this project, and he did so and prepared an initial study. Based on the consultant's review and preparation of the initial study, it was determined that this revised project before you did not result in any new or any new severe impacts than was previously analyzed and mitigated. So therefore, we prepared an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration that is attached to your staff report. But that document does not require any action by the Planning Commission, so your approval of the two thousand and eight mitigated negative declaration is all that's needed for the environmental review and part of this project. The applicant is here to address any questions the commission may have, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions as well.
Thank you very much. Are there any commissioner questions for the staff?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Marshall.
On the last approval that we gave, I know one of the big concerns and issues in neighbors was that electrical pole or utility pole by the driveway, and they were going to move it, or I, I mean, I didn't, maybe I missed it, I didn't see anything in here. Was that still the same, or?
I'll let the applicant address the pole in the right of way, but if you see on the map, a lot of the utility lines on the interior of the property will need to be undergrounded. Some will have to remain because they are the high-power lines, so they can't underground all of them. But I'll let the applicant address the one on the street.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
Lisa, I don't remember, I don't recall being on the commission when this was initially approved. Do you have any idea what the mitigated negative declaration contained at that time?
Well, a number of, this is kind of our standard mitigation measures relating to air quality, reduction of, you know, the dust, ensuring-
Were there any, were there any endangered species or any kind of-
None were identified on the site.
None? Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward first and make any comments you like, including if you have a brief presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Peterson. My name is Wilson Hugh. I work with Westgate Ventures in San Ramon. We have been working with Lennar Homes since the project's inception, or at least since the beginning of our involvement way back in April of two thousand and ten. I'm joined tonight by Jennifer Mastro from Strauss Design Group, the project's architect, and Stephen Jones from Lennar Homes, as well as Eddie Sue from RJA, the community civil engineer. I'd like to begin by thanking staff for doing a great job on this project, especially Aaron and Lisa. I can't say that we have always necessarily agreed on everything that we've discussed, but those discussions and debates have always been very civil and very reasonable. And I'd also like to commend them for working with our sometimes very difficult schedules and timelines. Now, I think the, the staff report and the, the graphics in your original package do a pretty good job of sort of describing the differences between what you have before you tonight and the project that was previously approved in two thousand and eight. When we first began looking at this project early last year, the original thought that was that we had sort of a turnkey program that was approved by the Planning Commission and was something that we might modify slightly and then build as is. But after a fairly quick review, where we looked at the project plans, also reviewed some of the comments from the Planning Commission hearings approving that project, as well as some of the neighbor comments, it appeared that there were some concerns that still lingered about that project, especially relating to the, its incompatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. So, you know, we took a look at the project and really went back to the drawing board. I think the major changes are the ones that Lisa has already identified in her staff report, and those relate primarily to the buildings and the architectural style that we're now proposing. As Lisa mentioned before, the, the houses in the two thousand and eight project averaged over three thousand feet in size, were relatively tall, and since they're on small lots, actually had a very massive appearance, which included, in some cases, even second stories that cantilevered over the garage. If I can refer you to the street scene over here, we've drastically changed the architecture. They are now less than two thousand feet in size, and we have designed them to be much more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. We are using elevational styles that I think are found commonly throughout the neighborhood, as well as the rest of San Bruno and the Bay Area. Now, I think there are a number of things that I'd like to point out about the site plan, because when you reduce the size of the house, it actually gives you a lot more open space to play with, and you can actually reallocate the use of that space in a much more efficient manner than I think was done in the old program. Yeah, I mean, just for reference, we have a copy of the site plan for the project that was approved in two thousand and eight, and since a lot of you were actually on the Planning Commission during that time, you probably remember it pretty well, and I think it's best for me to sort of describe some of the changes that we've made just by being able to compare the two plans. I think the, the biggest change that we've made, aside from the size and the architectural style of the buildings, really has to do with how we've reallocated the space. The lot sizes that we have now for our homes are considerably larger than the average lot sizes than what was approved in two thousand and eight, and one of the things that that allows us to do is provide a lot more separation between the buildings. If, I'm glad I brought my pointer here. If you look at these houses here that orient towards Pepper Drive, and in fact, I think this is true for most of the program, that project had the very large houses with only three-foot side yard setbacks, which meant that you really only had a six-foot separation in between the buildings. What we've really tried to do is match the, the rest of the neighborhood and increase both the front yard setbacks and the side yard setbacks. So, at a minimum, this community now has four-foot side yard, or four-foot side yard setbacks and eight feet between the buildings as a, as a minimum. But where, where the community interfaces most closely with the surrounding neighbors, up here on Pepper Drive, that's where you'd actually have existing homes across the street. We've increased the side yard setbacks from the original three feet to between five and six feet. So a lot of those homes will actually now have between ten and twelve feet between the homes. And the street scene's no longer up there before, but if you liked it, that was actually to scale, and you could see the, the separation between the houses. And that's one of the items that I think sometimes gets lost when you're just talking about the numbers, but makes a, a big aesthetic impact when you're actually walking down the street. Now, overall, as I mentioned, you know, one of our guiding principles in designing this project really had to do with trying to match the existing neighborhood. And the other thing that I'd like to point out is that the orientation and the configuration of our block, for lack of a better term, seems to make a lot more sense. We have homes on Pepper Drive, which just oriented the north, and everything else just orients to the south. We did not like the idea of having, you know, a third of our houses facing north, some of them facing east, and some of them facing west. So what we've really done is tried to reconfigure the site plan so that we just have a much more organic block that matches the rest of the neighborhood. Now, one of the nice byproducts of that is that I think we can alleviate a lot of the lingering neighbor concerns that we had in two thousand and eight about their privacy. If you look at the old program, you had five houses on the southern border, border of the, of the project, and a lot of folks were still pretty concerned about the impact on their privacy because folks would be on, in their second story windows looking down into the neighbors' backyards. So by putting our houses in that location on the other side of the street, I think we've gone a long way towards mitigating that concern. In addition, I think we've really beefed up the landscaping that is on the southern border of the property. The, the old project had a, I believe, a, a two-foot landscaping buffer that was supposed to screen the houses, the existing neighbors from the south from the new project. And what we've done is increased that buffer space to about six feet. And the, one other thing that I'd like to mention, I know there was some concern about parking before, when we've oriented the, the three houses that used to be on the eastern portion of the site. We now have no more driveways feeding off of Cedar, and that will help preserve some of the parking over here at the intersection of Cedar and Pepper Drive. As Lisa had mentioned before, and as is mentioned in your staff report, we conducted a neighborhood meeting in the fall of last year, and I would have to say that I thought that the reaction from the neighbors was overwhelmingly supportive. And in addition to some of the, or the meeting that we had as a group, I've also met with a few of the neighbors individually who are immediately adjacent to the site, and their response has always been very positive as well. One thing that I, I wanted to address, and I think Commissioner Marshall might have alluded to it earlier, from day one, when we first started looking at this piece, we recognized very quickly that we were next to a PG&E substation, and we also realized that we had a lot of power lines traversing the site. And we understood that to be probably our, we figured that would probably be our most difficult technical challenge in getting this built. I do have one other exhibit that I can put up there, if you can bear with me for a second. I've tried to highlight a few of the details on what would be the, the last page of your package there. Can, can everybody see that okay? I know it's a little bit difficult to read from that distance. So, I understand, back in two thousand and eight, when the, the old project was approved, there had been quite a bit of discussion about undergrounding the power lines, crisscrossing the site. And it's always actually been a little bit unclear to me how far the previous applicant got in trying to figure out how he was going to do that. Couldn't get any information from PG&E, and the plan seemed a little bit inchoate to me. But either way, like I said, we've engaged PG&E from virtually day one since we started working on this project, and have had numerous meetings with PG&E to try to understand how we can actually address the power line issue on the property. If you can see the, the blue lines that I've, I've highlighted there, coming across and coming down, those represent the lines that are currently on the site. And if you look at the red lines here, that is, in short, where we are planning on relocating the lines. Now, I understand that everybody's hope back in two thousand and eight was that it would be possible to completely underground everything on the site, but in some sense, that is actually a little bit of a physical impossibility. And the reason for that is really actually quite simple. If you have power lines above ground here, and power lines above ground here, and you underground everything in between, the stuff, the undergrounded lines have to come up out of the ground onto a pole. And so what we've tried to do is, the next best thing, which is to relocate the poles that we do have to keep on site, on this, on the portion of the site where the neighbor probably will not care about the aesthetic impact of those poles, namely PG&E. So as you can see, we've put the new poles along that red line right there. And then they would then underground to two different locations, one down here to one of the poles on a neighboring property, somebody we've already talked to and is supportive of the project. And then we will also be rising up on a couple poles on, on Cedar. Now, I understand the poles on Cedar at, at some time were, something that we're up for discussion a while back. The one unfortunate byproduct of this undergrounding plan, and we've tried everything that we can do to try to get around it, is that we will probably have to add one more pole to the, the area right on Cedar Avenue. And just for full disclosure, you know, that is something that we've been talking to staff about since day one, and it is something that we've disclosed to all the neighbors way back at the Fall Neighborhood Meeting. While it is one little blemish on the project, and we don't love the idea of having a new, a new electrical pole right in front of our models, it looks like that is probably the only solution here. We have talked with PG&E about trying to do some extra house cleaning, as they call it, by trying to move around the, the, the equipment that is on the poles in that area so that we could then rise up on the pole that we wanted to, right there. But that's the possibility, the likelihood of that happening at this point, I think, is actually pretty small. But it is something that we have investigated. So that is the, the project in a nutshell, and, you know, obviously will be available here for any questions you might have on some of the details. But there is one other thing that I wanted to bring up, and that has to do with some of the green building measures that Commissioner Biassadi brought up at our Architectural Review Committee meeting. I believe there are two items in particular that you had some interest in. One was the tankless water heater, and the second had to do with solar panels. I'm going to tell you upfront, you may not be super happy with my answer, but I'll give you a good justification for why. We've done a lot of work investigating whether the tankless water heaters would work well on this site, and what we find, and Lennar has actually used tankless water heaters in the past on other projects. But tankless water heaters really work well in two situations. The first one being in a smaller house with a smaller household and fewer hot water fixtures. The reason being that the most efficiency that you pick up from a tankless water heater over a, a water heater with a tank is in those intermittent periods where nobody is actually using any hot water. And that is most likely true- And that is most likely true in a situation where you've got a one or two-bedroom condo and one or two people living there and they go long stretches of time without actually needing the hot water. The second situation where a tankless hot water heater really works well is actually sort of the opposite situation where you have a very large house and you supplement, for instance, a bathroom that is very far from the primary tank system. And that saves you all the water that would normally be going down that long plumbing run. As you might guess, we don't have either of those situations in these houses. You know, they're basically four-bedroom houses with three bathrooms and in all likelihood we're also going to have a range of household sizes. Could be two people, it could be five. And thus, it's very difficult to optimize the use of the, or the size of the tankless water heater for that kind of variation. As it relates to the solar paneling, one thing I'd like to mention, and I'm not sure if anybody in the commission is aware of this, but Lennar is a very large home builder. They build tens of thousands of houses all across the country every year. And they were, in fact, the first national home builder to begin installing solar panels as a standard feature in a number of their communities. So if they had their druthers, they would be installing solar panels on almost every project that they build here in California. Unfortunately, solar panels don't work in every location. And the physical characteristics of Cedar Grove prevent a number of homes from really benefiting from having solar panels on them. It has a lot to do with the fact that there is a lot of grade variation on the site and we've got a lot of houses sort of at the bottom of a hill. And on that hill, we are trying to preserve as many trees as possible. And as you may know, even a small amount of shade can dramatically impact the effectiveness and efficiency of a photovoltaic cell. So for that reason, Lennar does not want to go forward with putting solar cells on these homes. But the one thing that they will do is pre-wire the houses for future solar installations. The thought being that solar technology is still relatively new as an electrical source for us, especially as one that is useful and cost-effective. It is possible in three, four, or five years from now that solar cells may make sense on this site. It could be from improvements in technology, it could be from lower costs of solar panels, and quite frankly, it could also come from the fact that PG&E rates may skyrocket for whatever reason. Any number of those things will then make solar panels on these houses make a little bit more sense. But pre-installing the wires to accommodate that system will make the future installation of any kind of solar paneling a lot easier for the future homeowner because they won't have to be tearing out their walls and so forth. And the one other thing that I'd like to say, because I feel like I've just told you that we're not going to install two green measures that I think are probably important to you, is that in a nutshell, these houses will still be the greenest houses or most energy-efficient houses built in San Bruno, probably ever at any scale. And I'm not sure how familiar the planning commission is with Title 24 requirements. And for the folks who might not be in the audience, Title 24 is, basically dictates the state requirements for energy efficiency for new housing in the state. And as you may know, those standards have changed over time. Up until 2010, they were still going by the 2005 standards. In 2008, they came up with new standards, but those were not actually implemented until 2010. And the new standards were actually 15% more efficient than the old standards. But for years, with sustainability, energy conservation, and green building in general being a very important part of Lennar's culture, they have been building to a Tier 1 standard for many years. Tier 1 is a voluntary standard, which means that you are actually building a house that is 15% more efficient than what the state requires. So if you combine, and just as an aside, I understand San Bruno has recently adopted a Tier 1 standard for all new buildings here as well. And we think that's a wonderful thing. But either way, if you combine the changes in the state requirements and the fact that Lennar is always building to a standard that is 15% higher than that, Cedar Grove homes will be, on average, more than 30% more efficient, energy efficient, than any house built in San Bruno over the last couple of years. It may not have some of the sexier bells and whistles like the solar panels, but there's, if you consider the house sort of an energy system, there's a lot of things that you can do, both passive and active, that help reduce energy usage. Better insulation in the walls, better insulation in the roofs, high-efficiency furnaces, higher-efficiency water heaters that have a tank, as well as better windows, doors, and insulated ductwork. So like I said, Lennar is very, very, they're very, very proud of their green culture. In fact, I understand that they recently changed their business cards that they're green. But anyway, I don't want to bore you with too many of those details. In short, I think we've got a project here that we've really improved in many ways. It fits into the, it really weaves itself into the fabric of the existing neighborhood a lot better. It is quantifiably green. And I see, you know, a couple people from the church here. The church has been working on this property for about 10 or 11 years now. And I know some of the neighbors in the area have also been sort of working with the church on this. And I think we finally have something that everybody is pretty excited to see go forward. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have. And if you have anything of more of a technical nature, we've also got the rest of the team here.
Very good. Before we open the public hearing to others, does any of the commissioners have a question for the applicant?
Through the chair. I appreciate your comments on the PG&E cable, wires, but that really wasn't, you didn't address my specific question I had. For one comment, you said that something was impossible. I don't like impossible. It could be costly and difficult, but nothing's impossible. But my question was, it's the power pole that is currently on Cedar Avenue. Would you be on your southeast corner of your, the new street?
Mm-hmm.
There is currently one right on the corner of your neighbor's lot. And his concern, major concern, and after I went by there, I was looking at it, the poles actually would be right where your driveway is now, and we were told that it was going to have to be moved in front of his property. Because the way, I believe your driveway is exactly the same or real close to the same as the previous applicant, is that correct?
It's close, but we will not be putting any power poles in anybody's driveway.
No, there is one now. There is one now, right where your driveway is, your proposed driveway is. And the last applicant said it was going to have to be moved to the south a couple feet, which would have been on the current property's driveway or blocking access there. And that was my concern. And before you answer that, my other question would be if you could explain the traffic flow on the new street and parking and turnarounds and that kind of stuff, real quick?
Sure. Well, let me...
Can I interrupt you a minute? Is someone's cellphone going off? Whoever belongs to that cellphone, could they capture it? Okay, go ahead, please.
Let me try to address the question about the power pole first. One of the things that I mentioned is that we've got a little bit more of a buffer on the south side of our property than the previous applicant had. I believe it's an extra four feet. And that will obviate the need for us to move any poles.
So that pole's going to stay?
Correct.
Without moving?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think you had the, maybe I didn't explain the undergrounding of the power...
I'm not worried about the underground. I understand. I was more concerned with that existing, I'm more concerned with how it's going to impact the neighboring properties more than how it's going to impact where you're building, because you're going to build what you're building if it impacts it, you have to deal with it. But I'm more concerned with the, we had a lot of concern with that pole being moved in front of somebody else's house to appease your property. And as long as it doesn't have to be moved, I'm happy with it.
And, you know, I've actually had a chance to, I believe I know which party that you're talking about, but, and I've had a chance to meet and discuss the project with them a couple of times. I think they might be in attendance tonight and, you know, hopefully they can speak in support of it.
There's somebody here.
If I could just add as well, the sheet does show that the pole to remain, it's labeled as existing pole number nine to remain, and it's clearly outside of the street access area, but that the down guy needs to be removed.
And that was a concern, I mean, I just want to make sure that nothing's going to be moved in front of an existing house to appease this project. I mean, that's not fair.
No, no, nothing like that will be done. In fact, the down guy will be moved so that they've got another facility that can keep the pole from falling down.
Okay.
I can't remember what it's called.
And the traffic flow, if you could just explain that real quick?
Yeah, the...
And off, and on-street parking?
Yeah, in terms of traffic flow, I know the, there was a traffic study done for the original project for the larger houses. And basically, the conclusion was that there would be a less than significant impact on the level of service on any of the major intersections around here. And in terms of the number of peak trips, I believe the study concluded that we'd be looking at approximately 14 trips per peak hour, which I think translates into maybe one extra car every four and a half minutes or so.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm mumbling here. My questions are, I should say traffic flow, I meant like, if you go down the street, I don't see a turnaround at the end, or is that, at the end of Lot B there, is that a turnaround? I'm thinking for UPS trucks or delivery trucks, are they going to have to go down there and then back up with their beep, 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 beep?
Oh, no, I, yeah, no, I apologize. You know, in that site plan right here...
I mean, is the street, is the street wide enough to make a U-turn?
Yeah, we have...
But the delivery truck goes down there, are they going to make a U-turn and come back out?
Yes, yes. And that'll be designed to the city standard.
And where will they make that U-turn? At the end of the street? Will it be a cul-de-sac?
There's a turnaround right where that red dot is. It's green right now because we're thinking about doing that in turf block or some sort of pervious material.
And that's all street parking there where, on the, just south of where you're pointing to, that's all street parking there then?
The street parking is on the bottom border right down here.
Okay. No, that's on the new street.
That's the new private street.
Do you know how many spots that is by any chance?
About like 11 or 12 of them?
It's 11.
11 spots.
Mm-hmm.
So that little area right south of Lot B is not for parking? That's no parking zone, that's for turnaround then, only?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons, that was actually one of the things that we tried to improve upon in the old project, where they had their turnaround, they actually had all their street parking, which, from a practical standpoint, doesn't actually work very well, but that's the way it used to be designed. We elected to put the street parking away from the turnaround.
You all set?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I have a few questions.
Commissioner, Mr.?
Thank you for the list of sustainability items. I had fun reading them. I have a couple questions. First of all, as far as the solar panels are concerned, instead of wiring the house, I would prefer, personally, I would prefer that a conduit be provided from the roof to, say, the meter, so that instead of the wires, you're providing a path. So five, six, 10, 15 years from now, the wires may be out of style or may not suffice the energy code requirements, and you're just providing a conduit. And that, I assume there's an HOA on this?
Correct.
That the HOA has a provision, the CCNRs have a provision in there that allow the occupant to actually install a solar panel system?
Uh, you know...
And they don't have to go through any approvals for that? No HOA approvals for that?
To be honest, I'm not sure if we have actually gotten that far on the CCNRs.
Okay.
But obviously, if we are going to pre-wire, when I say pre-wire, actually what I'm talking about is, in many respects, the conduit that you're talking about. But we will be sure to make sure that approval of solar panels is not something that gets precluded by the HOA.
Okay. That was the first question. The second question was, I don't know, number 56 in your letter, I was surprised to see an air conditioning system. Is that really true? You're installing AC units in San Bruno?
As of right now, that is the plan.
Okay. If you change your mind, could you switch it up for a tankless water heater system?
You know, the, actually, the air conditioning system, quite frankly, is something that gets decided on a little later on in the project. Usually, it's something that we install because people like to have them. But, you know, it's possible that they might not even be standard and they could be an option.
I was just surprised to see that in this proposal, that there's an AC system being proposed for the houses and is chartered as a sustainability matter. I understand the agent you're using is a chlorine-free agent, but I still don't find AC units sustainable in this climate, in my opinion. The other question I had was, I understand you changed the colors to be a little bit darker in order to suit the Architectural Committee, Architectural Review Board?
Correct.
Was the cool roof color changed as well? I found it a little bit darker in the rendering.
Yeah, you know, we use a lot of cool roofs. You know, one of the things that we can reevaluate with staff, I mean, we went back and forth on the colors quite a bit. And I don't, I'm not sure if we changed the roof colors along with the, I don't think we actually changed the roof colors.
Okay, so there's still cool roofs, cool roof tiles. I haven't checked out the specifications on this product at all.
Yeah, we'll have to double-check on that one. I mean, I know that typically when you have a darker house color, you like to go with a darker roof, but that's, is sort of at odds with having a cool roof.
Right. That was my thought, exactly.
Point well taken.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with questions?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
Just a couple. I wanted to just ask you, without having to take a role here, what are the back dimensions on the, I was going to say playgrounds, on the yards, particularly on lots six through 10, or five through 10?
Are you talking about the usable spa, well, you know, they do have, they do have quite a bit of slope once you get to the retaining wall.
So the usable space, I mean, just looking at that particular rendition, it doesn't, I can't quite tell. And really, I'm not a printed like, you know, I can't quite tell what these numbers are to see them. So if I'm looking at what probably would be page 27, 25 is the...
So for Lot 6, the closest... So for Lot 6, the closest is 11.4. But the average rear yard is about 15.4 feet. Lot 7, again, the closest is 11.4, but the remaining part is 15.4. Lot 8, 13 feet.
DC.
Lot 9, 15.4 feet. And then Lot 10, 12 feet for the rear yard. And I believe that's measured to the retaining wall?
Correct, to the retaining wall, okay.
She can see too, I think.
Well, I first, I was looking at, I was looking at, actually, the sheet off of that. It does not show any of those pieces, you know, so I just searched through it. But I couldn't quite, at this time, see those numbers. Thank you.
I couldn't find them either.
I know that. Over the years, you've been a very thorough review of this particular plan. And, let's see. I think my other questions are actually answered. Thank you.
Any other commissioners with questions? Commissioner Biassadi?
Yeah, I'd like to commend you on the effort that you put with your green thinking on this project. And I commend you for including at least the wiring for, or the possibility for solar in a project in the future. Conditions 88 to 91 refer to street lighting. And that was the one situation where we hadn't really looked at energy efficiency, and it's not, there's nothing asked for as far as that goes. Do you have any options or possibilities to go to a high-efficiency street lighting? Or had you not even given, you know?
That is not actually something, yeah, that's not something that we've really decided at this point. Yeah, you know, if we have the opportunity, certainly, I imagine it's probably a difference in light bulb.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? I'd like to thank you very much for a very low-key and understandable presentation that addressed many of the issues from the previous submittal to this one. And your work with the city staff, as well as the neighbors, which is essential. But I can see from your documentation and your presentation, you've been very active in that respect. So if you have any, if you don't have other comments, I'll open the public hearing.
Nothing for now, but I'm happy to answer any more questions that anybody might have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask any other members of the public who would like to speak to please step to the podium. Please give your name and your street name for the record.
My name's Marty Deluna, and I live on 575 Hawthorne Avenue, which I think is directly behind unit number three on that map. I just had a couple of questions. I appreciate the rework of the design and scale back. And of course, being behind those units there, we certainly had an issue with privacy. And it seems like you've addressed some of that. I just wanted to know about some of the sound and wind issues. And I'm not sure how tall those trees are gonna be, that are gonna be behind us. Oh, that's one of them. There's also, you know, electrical...
Oh, sorry.
Just for protocol, you're to address questions to the chair.
Oh.
And if I could suggest for efficiency, if you, if you would ask several questions, I'll ask the applicant to come up and give us a clue as to what he thinks on them.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So one of my questions, of course, is the sound and wind issue. I'm on our unit right back, and certainly the other ones too, along Hawthorne Avenue. The other question is about the electrical line that's running from a tall pole that goes directly to my house. I'm not sure how that's gonna affect their development, and where that line's gonna go. Seems pretty far, and might cut across some of the units along the corner there. And my other question was, the effect of our backyard, if it's gonna be sloping toward the development? If it's gonna be a drainage issue, or is there some kind of mitigation on that end? That, you know, would help mitigate any kind of effect that, you know, our sloping down? We have trees on our property too. I don't know if they're gonna be an issue as far as they could eventually fall down, or any liability on that end. We like to keep those trees as part of the privacy issue we have. So those are the questions that I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could I, could I ask the applicant if you could give us some brief comments on this?
Sure, if you wouldn't mind. I just, I can't understand exactly which line.
I'll try to address all of them. I'll start with the last one first, the concern about drainage. I think this site actually has a history of drainage problems. That's primarily because there's no drainage system, and we will be installing one. What we've got out there, or what we're proposing, is a five-foot detention basin that will slow down the flow and keep water on-site before it enters the city system. In terms of, you know, any work on his lot, nothing's gonna be happening. We're not gonna be touching a single tree on any of the private lots around us, with the exception of, you know, one power pole that is existing on the Vicari residence. And like I said, we've already talked with them. It's just that the underground line is going to be rising up on that pole. And they've, they've got no problems with that.
Great. And sound and wind in general, do you have any comments on, do you believe your project will create any sounds or wind that affects that he's not experiencing now?
In terms of sound, obviously, there's gonna be some noise during construction. In terms of wind noise, I would not think so. One thing that I can say about all the trees that are coming down is that we're actually trying to replant as many as we can. I believe about 60 of them are coming down. That said, about 40 of them are blue gum eucalyptus trees, which in many other jurisdictions, they actually consider to be a fire hazard. But we'll be replacing a lot of trees, both on the southern border of the project site, as well as trying to replace a number of trees on that northern triangle area where we're approaching PG&E. In terms of the sizes of the trees, the ones on the southern border, they're, I'm told they're Pacific wax myrtles, and I think they're about 15 feet in height. They'll be 15 feet tall at maturity.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public, please step to the podium and give your name and a street name?
My name is Gail Mozzini, and I live on Cedar. Question is, street lighting? Since a great number of us are backyards, but up against the access street, we wanna make sure that the lighting is the downed, I'm not probably using the correct terms, but the downed lighting, so that we're not like in a spotlighted, that our whole backyard, or the lights are coming into our home, or anything like that. So that would be something that we would be concerned about. Also, personally, the other thing is what Mr. Marshall brought up, and I believe Lisa addressed it, is we are the home with the pole next to us. And it does have that guide wire that kinda holds it up. The concern is how that pole will be held up. We do understand that it's not being moved, our property is fine, but there is the safety issue. If the guide wire is gone, what else is gonna be there to hold it? Those are my two. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
I'll start with the last question first. Yeah, when we remove the down guy, we will be putting in what's called a head guy. So the guy wire that holds up the pole will be above ground, basically. In terms of the lighting, you can design the fixture so that any light that is coming out of it is on our property only. So the neighbors to the south of us, and anybody else who doesn't want any extra light can be completely shielded from it.
Very good. I'd like to refer you, the conditions of approval for the application cover that. They indicate that light will be directed downward by street lighting. And, I'm sorry, I missed you. Please take a look at the conditions, and here it indicates that that will be happening. You're welcome. Any other members of the public like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, hearing none, and without objection, I'll close the public hearing. Bring the matter back to the commission for discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
If there are no other questions or comments, I move that the planning commission approve Plan Unit Permit 10-005, Tentative Truck Map 10-002, and Architectural Review Permit 10-003, based on the findings of facts, 1 through 9, and subject to conditions of approval, 1 through 11, and 1 through 143.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mishra. And is there a discussion on the question? Are there some items that other commissioners may have seen in the conditions that they wanna ask staff about, or is it meet with your satisfaction?
Yeah, through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Rather than add a condition for the street lighting, I'd just like to instruct staff to look for the most efficient lighting along with the applicant, and see what we can come up with.
For my part, I noticed that in the conditions and the findings, there are a number of references to a period during which the project will be constructed. And some of them are not entirely clear how they coordinate with others. And I'd like to ask staff to review that. Assuming that this is passed, please review it and make sure they're well coordinated clearly, so that there aren't, how do you say, disputes over it in the future. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments on the matter? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you very much for coming. I'll just take a recess of a few minutes to allow the public to clear the room. We have just a few other items of business. The meeting, and with Agenda Item Number Six. Agenda Item Number Six, A, is city staff discussion, which is to select the May 12 ARC Review Committee members.
Yes, so do we have volunteers for the May 12? We have, now we have three, four? So we have Commissioner Mishra, Commissioner Biassadi, and Commissioner Peterson.
Any other city staff discussion?
No, but, yeah, so we're moving on to planning commission.
Yes, I'm just seeing, is there?
No, no.
You don't have any other items?
Nothing else, no.
Planning commission discussion.
Just through the chair real quickly, if I could.
Commissioner Chase.
I'll speak for myself. I know that the city sent myself and Commissioner Biassadi down to the Planners Institute down in, where was that?
Pasadena.
Pasadena. First time I had ever been there, I guess I must've forgot it already. Anyway, it was a very interesting conference, if you will. A lot of it was, you know, somewhat the same old. But they did have a few new breakout discussion groups, if you will, whatever, for lack of a better term. I did happen to bring back a couple of books. Some of them were about signage, which was kinda very interesting. That's kinda going in the future and everything. I'm not gonna bore everybody with the details, but it was a, it was a very interesting experience. Once again, and I appreciate the opportunity to go, and I'll leave these books with staff so they can take a look at it if they're pleased. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Biassadi?
Yeah, I also went to that conference, and I have forwarded to Aaron all the handouts and PDFs from that. And he was gonna review them, but I think he's been a little bit busy at the moment. So those are on the way to all the commission. And there's also a legal update coming from Mark and Connie Jackson that should be coming as well.
Thank you. I just checked, Sean, and she indicated they're all there waiting for me. When I get back.
Very cool. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Through the chair.
Commissioners, the mood?
I'd like to ask staff to take a look, if they would, at the use permit for the auto, the used car lot that is on El Camino adjacent to the, I guess, the furniture, Mark, the old San Bruno Ford. I seem to remember when we approved that, that we approved it for, I think, eight to 10 vehicles. And he's well in excess of that now. And not that I, I think it's great that he is, but I just don't want him to be not in compliance with the use permit if we did limit the number of vehicles.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. I believe the limitation on the number of vehicles related to ensuring there is onsite customer parking. So we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commission discussion?
Through the chair. I just have one more.
Commissioner Mishra.
I understand that sometimes the awning, or signage, or et cetera, comes to the ARC Review meetings. And I've noticed that in San Francisco, for example, there's a lot of pigeons that occupy the space in the awnings. And I haven't seen any details or any recommendations for protecting the awnings from pigeons. And I just wanted to point that out, that if we are approving any more awnings, that we make a provision for that, that the owner takes care of it, cleans it, makes sure that there aren't any pigeons in that space? That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Covering many details today. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.